Good evening. Meeting of the Winthrop Town Council for November 5th, 2014 is now called to order. This meeting is being recorded and may be televised live. Please send everybody's notification. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Councilor Sam.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Would you all please remain standing. Tonight we remember Rona Mail, a lady who was very active in the town of Winthrop for many years. She was a teacher here. She then worked up at Donna Rioni Nursing Home. Hi. Craig's mother, that's why Craig isn't with us tonight. And she chaired our scholarship committee for the town right up until the end. A week and a half before her passing, she called me to make some arrangements about the scholarship committee. A great lady who will be missed. And while we're standing, I'd also like to remember Mammonino. Thank you. Councilor Quick Denise, would you follow the roll?
Councilor Callow. Councilor Sanford.
Here.
Councilor Boncory.
Here.
Councilor Brown.
Here.
Councilor Terry.
Here.
Councilor Weijen.
Here.
Councilor Neal. Vice President Gavento.
Present.
President Gill.
Present. Our quorum is present. And tonight we have the Community Health Needs Assessment for the town of Winthrop. Now, that's Mr. McKenna if you want to introduce our guests.
Yes. Good evening. It's really a pleasure to have our Health Needs Assessment Committee here. We had both assistance from the Mass General Hospital Office of Community Health Improvement.
I never remember that.
But I won't forget it. And with that office, we have Leslie Aldrich here. Nice to see you. And Mary Lou. Great. And Leslie has really helped spearhead the effort and brought a level of coordination and professional direction to our efforts. You know, for a long time, we've been looking to assess the health condition of the community as a whole, what the public health issues are, and what strategies we can develop, you know, to guide the town, its council, and its Board of Health in terms of developing priorities for health needs of the community. We've had great leadership from several community members. Chief among them has been Pat Milano, who's had a great role and involvement in the leadership of this effort. And also Donna Riley, who is a strong advocate for public health and awareness in the community. And with them, they've really led the charge on our behalf to bring, for the first time to this community, a completed health needs assessment of the town. Basically, a snapshot of both dreams, goals, and some, you know, concerns, as expressed in the report. And this will really bring a wonderful planning tool to the town to help design its future strategies and also to help us when we seek for state or federal assistance in addressing those needs and strategies. And so, I'm very, very happy to have this group here with me tonight to present this report. Meredith Hurley has also been a member of the committee and has helped, you know, since coming on board with the town. And we've had input from others. I know that the Board of Health has had some input into the report as well, playing an advisory role in the development of the report. There were other folks involved. And this sort of group grew to a large group at one point and then sort of got down to a core group of folks who really shepherded forward. But I know that Jean Maggio had a strong involvement. Several members of the Airport Hazards, Noise and Hazards Committee were involved in some of the issues. And, you know, just a number of folks that we've had over the several years that this has been developing played some, you know, role in their outlined concerns expressed in the report. So with that, I'd like to ask Wesley if you wouldn't mind leading the conversation tonight. And I know we have a presentation to share with the council and with the community. Wesley? Come right up here.
Thank you, everyone, for having me. So I have asked as well both Pat Milano and Meredith Hurley to present this data with me, since they are active members. And Donna also would like to say a couple of words as well as far as her involvement in the process. I'll start really quick and let you know who I am. So my name is Leslie Aldrich. I'm the Associate Director at the Center for Community Health Improvement at Mass General Hospital. And the hospital basically has had the center since 1995. The hospital's been around, as many of you know, since 1811, to care for the sick poor. We've had health centers in many communities for over 40 years. This center, as I said, was created in 1995, really to assess and address the community health needs and really to create intervention plans. So a little, before I begin, Donna, did you want to say something?
Just briefly, because I know that the town manager has touched on some of the reasons why we're here and we undertook this endeavor. I know myself, I was previously chairperson of something called the Health Education Review Committee back in 1987, and that went through 1993, in an effort to improve the health curriculum of Winthrop Public Schools. But in more recent years, my personal interest in some of the health issues of our Winthrop citizens and healthcare services here in town spurred me to accept Town Manager Jim McKenna's invitation to be a member of the Winthrop Health Forum. And I also accepted the town manager's request to assist with the Quality of Life Survey. And I, and you've already alluded to the fact that Rona Mail was a great contributing member to this town as a whole, but she also was part of this committee. The town manager, and I think this is key, he explained to me that the importance of this community health assessment, which cities like Revere, Boston, and Chelsea had already conducted, in completing these assessments, these cities now have the documentation to apply for healthcare grants, especially the Suffolk County North area, which includes Winthrop, Revere, and Chelsea. As Leslie already mentioned, the hospital closed back in 1994. I personally do not know what I would have done without Winthrop Hospital, especially when our son suffered three nocturnal asthma attacks. The staff at the Winthrop Community Hospital was there to treat our son and normalize his breathing. And I was certainly glad to have the hospital there at the time. For these reasons, I gladly accepted the opportunity to be part of the Quality of Life Survey that could lead to some funding, that would lead to funding some sort of health service program that could address and treat the physical, emotional, social, and environmental health needs of our Winthrop citizens. Grant monies could also be used to enhance already existing health organizations and efforts in this town. I chose to be part of the public relations part, or the advertising and dissemination part of the Quality of Life Survey. In that role, I worked alongside Pat Milano and Mary Lou Osborne to disseminate information about the survey and why it was important to complete. I personally forwarded the survey to some of my contacts and reached out to the Winthrop churches, synagogues, and social and charitable organizations. A special mention here, however, to the Winthrop Sun Transcript, particularly to Stephen Quigley and Carrie Schuman, who were extremely cooperative and generous to the Quality of Life Committee. What they did was they afforded us free advertising in a few of their issues and reported why the survey was important for Winthrop citizens to complete. So I'm personally very proud to be part of this community health assessment that could well provide resources to improve the overall health of our Winthrop community. And I thank the people with whom I have worked closely, Town Manager Jim McKenna, Council Director of Program Development, Pat Milano, Mary Lou Osborne, and MGH is Leslie Aldrich, and Danielle Mirabell. And a special thanks to all those Winthrop people who completed the survey. Okay. And that's all I have to render at this point.
That's great. Great. So we'll begin. I just want to mention that this document and the health needs assessment here is not a definitive, you know, piece on the health of Winthrop. It's really a snapshot of what the needs are at this time. So this is really a document that should be updated, you know, every couple of years to make sure that the health needs remain the same or change so that you can keep on top of it. Okay. And I just too want to thank you all for having me here, welcoming me into the community and letting me do this and work with such wonderful people. And Donna is really, like no one I've ever worked for, she is on top of everything in this community and knows how to get stuff done. So I do appreciate that.
Almost.
Along with Pat and Meredith and Jim, for everybody in us here to help do this. So I went through what the MGH Center for Community Health Improvement is about. It's really about assessing and addressing the needs of communities. And we define health broadly. Health is not just about healthcare and disease and access to care. It's about health behaviors and the social and economic factors that determine health. It's, together, these factors amount for really over 60% of health status for individuals. So you can provide all of the highest quality healthcare in the world, but it's not really going to make any of us any better, right? So it's really important to conduct these health needs assessments to find out how to respond to the actual needs of communities, what these social and economic factors are that make us all sick. So in order to do the assessment, we turn to a method that we've used in other communities. And we've done this community health needs assessment in Chelsea, in Revere, and in Charlestown. And we turn to a process called mobilizing for action through planning and partnerships, which actually Pat is also familiar with, with her Boston involvement as well as within Winthrop. And it's a community-driven process for improving community health. It was developed in 2000 by the Center for Disease Control. And basically, all it is is a planning document. It has three phases designed to help communities collect different types of data in order to help prioritize their needs. So the first step is to really conduct, we conducted community health needs assessment meetings. They're attended, as Donna said, by many sectors of the community, healthcare, education, social services, government, criminal justice, everybody that was there, just to get a good sense of what the issues were in the community. We did a Quality of Life Survey within the community. We had over 770 responses back, which is a really good response rate for a community survey. And it really provided us an important piece of information. It's not a true representative sample from the community, however, when you combine it with both assessment committee data, so all the sectors kind of involvement and their opinions, along with the public health data, which is data that comes from the census and comes from Boston Public Health Commission, and I should say Department of Public Health and school surveys, et cetera. When you combine a survey and all these other public health data and what people are saying within the community, you get a good sense of what the issues are. So what did we learn? So that's what the most important thing is. What we found out and we asked in the Quality of Life Survey was, what generally makes up a healthy community? What do people believe makes up a healthy community? Any community, not just Winthrop. And the top three things that people said were low crime, good schools, and a clean environment. And that's what they believe made up a healthy community. When we talk about the assets, and it's important to talk about the assets in the community, because these are really the things that you're going to go refer back to when you're thinking about interventions and how to move forward with a public health kind of agenda. And there are many things that people said as far as assets, proximity to Boston, good local TV, the natural resources, the beach, affordable housing, good schools, faith base, there's lots of things here to really push forward and capitalize on. When we ask in part of this assessment, we ask about what the forces of change are in the community, what is going on in the community that can affect our health that we actually don't have a lot of control over. And when we asked that of people, what they said were pollution, right, airport pollution specifically, climate change, healthcare reform, housing, and a casino. And as we all know, a casino's going to come in in a little while. So these are the things that we may not have control over in the community, but it will affect health. So we need to take those into consideration as we move forward. So the top three things that came out of this survey and through kind of community conversations and the public health data that supported it were substance use and environment and cancer. And those are the top three things that people believed were affecting, were the public health problems within Winthrop. And at this point, I'm going to turn it over to both Pat and Meredith to talk a little bit about the substance use data and the environment and cancer data, so you can get a sense of why people believe these are the top issues within the meeting.
Thanks, Leslie. One of the reasons that we selected MAP as the tool to use is because MAP looks at health issues from many different sides, rather than, you know, simply maybe putting a survey out there, looking at the results of the survey, seeing what folks say. Using the MAP process is much more, you know, inclusive, and it gets people thinking and talking about outside factors that are packed out. Because we know in terms of health outcomes that place matters. So it matters where you live, the quality of life that you have in terms of your health outcomes. We gathered all the information. We had people using a dot exercise, sort of tell us what were the things that they were most concerned about, as Leslie has already said. Substance use, that was both alcohol and drug use combined, followed by the environment and cancer. So in terms of substance, I've been working with the local coalition for quite a few years now. We have funding from the federal government to look at some of the issues that add to or that help create some of the problems that we might have in our community. Every year, so actually, it was earlier this year, we used the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, which is a tool from the CDC that measures risk behaviors among youth, and we're required by the federal government to gather that information. Some of the good news is, is that we have seen some of the trends in youth. So when I say that we've surveyed youth, I should let you know that we've surveyed every student in grade six through 12 that came to school on a particular day that the survey was given. So when we talk about statistical validity and representation, it really is representative of the youth that attend school in our community. So we've included all of them. We are seeing that some of the behaviors are decreasing. However, alcohol use among students still continues to be higher than the state average and the national average, as well as binge drinking. And binge drinking is described as four or five drinks in one sitting, so in a short span of time. Also, we have high numbers of individuals that report that they have some substance use disorders within their families. So there's either somebody who's actively drinking or drugging in their families as The value of sort of looking at kind of what's happening in our community allows us to see any patterns that might emerge. In addition to the alcohol, certainly, since marijuana was decriminalized in 2009, and then, of course, medical marijuana was approved in a following ballot, we've seen the incidence in use of marijuana also increase among youth. Additionally, and this is a nationwide trend, and, you know, by all means, we're not trying to paint the community with a negative brush, but this is really, we kind of mirror what's happening across the state and across the country. But we also have seen a trend where the third most abused substance in the United States is prescription drugs, and we see that reflected as well in the behaviors that youth report here in Winthrop as well. We are working on a number of initiatives, both alcohol-related and opiate-related, and I can say more about that later. And we'll tell you about some of those things that we're doing to begin to address this. And then we continue the dialogue about what we should be doing in our community. Is there more, and are there other programs, curriculum, policies, you know, different things that we could be doing locally that would increase the protective factors and decrease the risk factors for folks here in Winthrop? I'm not sure exactly where Meredith was going to come in, because we haven't rehearsed this.
Right, right. Oh, did you want to talk about?
So the other thing that I want to say is about mental health. And we actually met with our consultant today to talk about the 2014 data. Meredith was with us. One of the things that sort of jumped out at us during the most recent survey data collection was that youth are reporting a lot of mental health issues, sadness, anxiety, depression. We're seeing more of that, suicidal ideation, so thoughts about suicide, creating plans. They were things that concerned us, and I think we're going to look more deeply into that, begin to talk with some of the professionals that we have here in the community, find out whether or not this is being reflected in what they're seeing, say, for instance, in the schools, and then talk about some of the strategies that we can use to address that. But it was something that caught our attention, and we certainly are paying attention to that and looking more closely at it.
And with, you know, with substance use and higher rates of substance use, and in Winthrop, they are higher than some communities and the state overall, you do tend to see a little bit more violence, in some cases, personal violence. There's a correlation between personal violence, in a lot of cases, and substance use, and also the mental health that goes along as well.
So I can make up there. Thank you. So for the secondary one about the environment, it's been a big dialogue, I feel like, throughout the town, at least for the last year and even longer, with the Logan Airport Study and kind of everything that's been going on with it. Fifty-three percent of the community respondents said that air quality in the airport in general is creating a problem here in town. Unfortunately, I don't believe that Mass Board has any plans to move Logan Airport away from us. So it is kind of here to stay. You know, it's, out of the study that came out, the two big things was just that pediatric asthma has increased, and also COPD is increased in our elderly, especially in the high-impact versus the low-impact areas. Mass Board, just two weeks ago, three weeks ago, gave $170,000 to East Boston Neighborhood Health Center. So we're going in the right direction with combating at least the pediatric asthma. That's what that money is going to be used for. About five days after that announcement, I went over and I met with Bernadette Thomas, the Director of Nursing over there, just to kind of get a sense of what the program is that they're going to be bringing here. They're still in the building process. So far, we've identified 150 kids within the Winthrop Public Schools that are asthmatics. And how are they going to kind of combat them within the schools? You know, they're talking about bringing community health workers in, work within the schools. They're also talking about doing door-to-door home visits, kind of grassroots, you know, boots-on-the-ground kind of dealing with this issue. So, you know, I do applaud them for that. And my main concern was whether or not they were going to target all children, regardless of how they're insured, where they get their primary care, which they will. It's not, they don't have to be only hooked into East Boston Neighborhood Health Center. So that's definitely a bonus for just the continuum of care that came out of this. You know, there's moving forward, dealing with the COPD aspect, I think will be kind of the next step going forward. Unfortunately, a lot of residents were upset that cancer wasn't studied in the context of this. And I think that a letter was drafted to the Department of Public Health raising those concerns. Now, the Department of Public Health, their answer was, since the number one factor of lung cancer is smoking, that it's very hard to control, because you can have one resident that has lung cancer that says that they're a non-smoker, but then if you look a year previous, they're a 20-year smoker. So it's really hard to control for that. Unfortunately, we do have much higher, well, we have higher rates of lung cancer and breast cancer in town, which just speaks to me that we have to do bigger pushes on screening. And I know within the Board of Health, we're also, they're also working on more smoking ordinances, kind of just to firm things up, because, you know, Winthrop's smoking rate right now is 20%, which is 34% higher than the state average. Even more concerning is probably that, out of the compliance checks that they did in 2012 and 2013, our compliance was 118% worse than the state average. So out of the 33, so we are letting things slip through at a higher rate than, much higher rate than other towns. You know, if you think of it in a segue in terms of healthy behaviors and, you know, making sure that everybody's safe, that's what I, you know, the Board of Health is also looking at that.
Yeah. In terms of smoking too, there are other means of inhaling nicotine, so now e-cigarettes, and you may have heard about e-cigarettes, but nicotine is being added to other products. So as the Board of Health looks at ordinances around tobacco sales and things like that, they're also including these new nicotine delivery systems that folks are being creative about to get them hooked on nicotine products. So those are basically the top three concerns within Winthrop. Substance use, and we refer to it as substance use disorders, the environment, air pollution, and cancer. And there is public health data to support that these are public health issues and something to address. Other issues of concern that came up that I just thought were worth mentioning, people said that education, aging problems, we did have a large number of those, over 65 take the survey, so I wasn't surprised to see that. And also obesity, diet, and inactivity. So those are things that are just, you know, something to put on the horizon, and also things that are important to address, because some of these, obesity, inactivity, do lead to cancer and other health issues, so important to mention. The last two slides here and the last things I want to mention are that at the Center for Community Health Improvement and in public health overall, the best, what we always refer to is this public health, this health impact pyramid, we call it. And it was created by Thomas Reading from the CDC, who is in the news quite a bit lately. But it's really that evidence-based strategies, practices, programs, and interventions must be employed in order to maximize impact. And it really goes at this level, and that the higher, the highest impact is really when you look at the socioeconomic factors and tackle that through policies and interventions. You go from counseling and education, which are going to affect a smaller number of people. You do your clinical interventions, you get a little bit, a larger number of people that you're impacting. Then you kind of change the context of the environment in which you live, and then you develop policies to kind of support these public health initiatives. And that's really where you make the largest impact. So we follow this kind of in our center and really try to tackle public health issues at every step of this pyramid, so that we're making a full impact. And just moving forward, there's lots of good things that are going on already in Winthrop. So this isn't meant to cast a shadow and say these are the, you know, bad things, but there are things to consider as we move forward. As Pat said, there's many, many things happening, and as Meredith. What we always talk about and what follows along this pyramid is really thinking about education and awareness within the community. We do that a lot through social media campaigns and really, you know, targeted educational interventions. A lot around health workers, recovery coaches, navigators, this is big right now in the field of public health, getting people access to care. Recovery coaches are huge around substance use and treatment and recovery, and having somebody who's in recovery themselves actually help somebody navigate through the system to get help. And that's really big. It's being funded a lot now. And I know that Winthrop is actually looking into getting some money to do just that. Also looking at stuff around the environment. Also looking at stuff around the environment, increasing physical activity, healthy eating, making healthy, healthy choice, the right choice, can do that a lot through many different, many different arenas. I know that we have Walk Winthrop, one of the, one of the things that might be happening here, which will help. And then, as I said, policy development and advocate for policy changes that support healthy living. They have Health in All policies so that you're really, any policy that you're gonna have within the community, you really think of it from a health lens in a sense, and is this going to affect our health in any way? So, those are really the broad kinds of ways of moving forward. And this really documentary is here just to kind of help start the conversation.
Just if I could follow up, I alluded to it earlier. In terms of substance use prevention, we're working both locally and regionally. So, locally, we're working through the Coalition. We've done a couple of things with some of the youth in our community, so they've been trained in environmental scan, so it's a way of them going out to the community. They looked around, took pictures, and they're putting together a presentation, I hope to get them before some board or another. But they look at things where there's evidence that there might be alcohol being used, you know, what is the lighting in the area, what is the condition of the area? So, there's always things that we could talk about and think about doing in terms of reducing the number of places that might be isolated where this kind of behavior happens. They've also been educated on compliance checks, so at some point in the future, we'll be doing some checks with local alcohol vending establishments here in Winthrop. And we had done some, the police had done some prior. There were a couple of issues based on that. We went forward also with a alcohol awareness training that we did just last week on the 28th. We actually had, I believe, a representative from every single establishment in Winthrop, so whether it was a restaurant, a private club, the Elks, every restaurant that serves alcohol or has a brown bag policy, everybody showed up and learned a lot more about how they can provide alcohol safely. And then regionally, we're working with Revere, Saugus, and Chelsea on the opioid abuse prevention project. And that's where we're hoping to get the recovery coach. Chelsea and Revere do have treatment navigators and recovery coaches. Saugus and Winthrop don't have the resources for that, but through this grant funding opportunity, we have the ability to get someone who can come into the community, who knows the community, and assist families and individuals who have substance use issues. So, that's part of what's happening. We're hoping to expand the drop-in hours. A drop-in would be someplace where folks who have substance issues to go get help or find out about what kinds of resources might be available and
Narcan.
And Narcan training, which we did. So, we trained residents in Narcan use and through the drop-in, they would also be able to access that.
And everybody knows what Narcan is, as far as reversal of order.
So, yeah, we were here a couple of weeks ago, yeah, doing a piece on the opioid abuse prevention project. So, we're hoping to, you know, be moving forward and addressing some of the issues in our community.
Could I ask if there were any questions from the audience, if there were questions or comments from the presenters?
Yes, I have a question. I know that back on May 23rd, I think, we had representatives from the Department of Public Health present the Airport Health Study. And it's in my other pack of things, but the name, is it Condon Assistant Commissioner?
Suzanne.
Suzanne Condon. And I think a letter was drafted to have her come back and share in a public forum the results of the cancer study and incidents here in Winthrop. And I think days back, a couple of years.
Right.
So, do we know maybe through the town manager where that is or, you know, where, I know there was a lot going on, you know, so it was just a matter of time when we would be able to bring her back. She gladly accepted the invitation to come back. And I just wonder where we are on that.
I know the Airport Hazards Committee is dealing with that. Jim, did you have a comment?
Yes, that's right. They've engaged a consultant to do a peer review on behalf of Winthrop to consider the issues presented in the report and to provide a response by the Airport Hazards Committee. They're, they're charged with responding to the report, and so they want to do it through the use of a consultant who has the expertise to properly view the report relative to the Winthrop's issues and that they're preparing that response.
Okay, thank you so much.
Any further from the public?
If I could talk on a couple of issues in the report. Of course, we've been through this a couple times with Mass General Impact and Meredith. The importance, the underlying issues that we see on a day-to-day basis is not captured fully, I think, in the report because it's a written document. When you're living it, it's a lot different. I think we all recognize around the room and through our regional partners, we cannot arrest our way out of the substance abuse problem. It is larger than making arrests and doing drug stunts. It's to the point where we need the street workers, we need the follow-ups. We need to, when the fire department's administering Narcan, the next day, the week after, to follow up. Drug court, very successful, East Boston Court, but had lunch with the judge two weeks ago. There's no following their progress once they graduate from that drug court. So, it's like having, being on a diet on January 1st. We all do very good. How are you doing in February and March and April? We all tend to forget about those months. It's the same in recovery. The further you get away from your recovery coaches and the people that have the controls over you, the easier it is to slip back into your old habits and old, old behaviors. So, I think it's very, very important, there was a stat in here that shows us way above the average of the state on opioid use and that people have been treated in the actual hospitals. That same chart compares us to the city of Chelsea, and we're above the city of Chelsea. And we are a fraction the size. Now, there's, there could be many theories to that. It could be, you know, our people could be getting more treatment than the people in Chelsea. Our people could be buying more drugs in Chelsea and bringing them back, and that's not cap, you know, that's not captured. So, there's several different options there, but there's certainly concerns that we need to address. I know the Rock is addressing it, the street worker, and sharing the street worker. We feel there's enough need here to have a street worker here. And I know Pat's been pushing for that with the Rock, but we strongly can't just rely on the Rock. We need to look at other avenues. I know the town manager's office through Joe has submitted for an additional grant that would be, the person would be supervised through the Health Department. They would be one-way information exchange from police and fire, one way to the health. We would not get information back. So, we really could affect people's lives and really increase the quality of life locally. And the other stunning statistic is the number of grandparents actually caring for children, or grandchildren, is at 25%. That's a, that's a large number. And I think we can correlate these issues. They're taking care of them because of substance abuse problems. So, I think it all comes back to substance abuse, the thefts, the Viennese, you know, grandparents taking care of grandchildren. So, I think we go after this substance abuse problem full-heartedly on a holistic approach and not just an enforcement approach. We can really make improvements here. I know the council has been certainly very strongly supporting and funding police and fire and the Health Department. We hope to get them expanded up and running so they can assist us. We take a lot of pressure off police and fire. So, thank you, Peter. And thank you for your work.
That is great. And I've mentioned too, is this health assessment we did in Chelsea, and you should know, substance use came up as the number-one issue in all the communities. Heroin use in particular is generally a white 20 to 45-ish is the demographics of those who are using heroin. So, it's not surprising that it is higher in Winthrop, given your demographics here. But as I said, in Chelsea, we did do this health assessment and it really mobilized the community in new and different ways, and they knew, they did not have a substance use coalition like you have now. However, they did use, they created a substance use coalition and really advocated for more funding at the city level to put navigators on the streets. So, they're in the process of hiring two navigators to do some subject mental health to work with the outreach workers to help families and those who are using.
From the council? Councilwoman.
No, I was struck by the high school survey that's done, that 8% prescription drug use and 3% state average. That was pretty, you know, you know, and I guess a couple of concerns were the, help me to understand, with the recovery coaches, it sounds like they're kind of, would they be utilized if, as our chief said, you know, we, we can arrest people over and over again and it's just, but if there's no follow-through? Is that what the intention of these recovery coaches is, is to somehow develop that system where if there's some, if there is, you know, an arrest or anything else that gets them in the system, these are the folks that would help to, help them to recover and monitor them and give them the support? What's our access to rehabilitation centers? I mean, it's pretty poor from what I understand as far as the ability to get someone in when they're actually needed.
I think that's what a lot, that is missing from a lot of these conversations, is the fact that if, if somebody really wants help and is willing to, you know, go, the likelihood that there's a bed on that day at that moment is slim to none.
Right.
Yeah, depending on their insurance. So, and even, you know, Long Island was closed emergently, you know, upwards of 500 people were released from a detox in a matter of an afternoon.
So, in these programs you're talking about, it sounds like a, like a systemic approach. I'm sure they have metrics for success. Have they been implemented in other communities, maybe not even in Massachusetts, that have shown a way to decrease this, wait, just this, this epidemic, if you will? Has it been done in others?
It hasn't really been studied fully. It's just now getting off the ground. It's now like a new movement, recovery coaches. And the recovery coaches are really meant to get people into treatment by any means possible. So, it could be anything from AA to detox, to individual counseling, it's any means that would work for that individual and to, and to track them and to follow up with them over time and to meet them where they're at, because everybody's at a different readiness.
Did I understand that it looked like Mass General was revamping along with your assistance the, the, the health centers to do that?
Right.
And I know that Mass General and the partner system with Hallmark Health is intent on moving into our community, which is wonderful. I'm wondering if that's something we can make a request that, like you've done in other communities, could we embed a recovery coach system within that practice?
Right.
That would, you know, that, that would be something I think would be very beneficial and that might allow grant money to go further in other means to add to that.
It's something that could down the line. We are just now hiring for recovery coaches and are in the pre-health centers. So, there will be a recovery coach in Revere for any MGH patient that shows up in Revere. But they are just for patients, so not everybody goes to Revere, and actually, it's, it's a smaller percentage than you would think, or to the, to the health centers. So, the recovery coach in the community could be for anybody, it just wouldn't have to be for an MGH patient. But it would be a good start. We are just now starting it, they haven't started it yet, so we, to get that
We're used to asking, we want to ask, whatever we
We have to get that off the ground before we can think about the next steps. But the ideal is to, to expand it.
And then, sorry, one more thing and I'll be quiet.
Almost.
With the, not really, because I'm sure I'll think of something, but one of the concerns I have in our community is the focus on trying to assign causality and in regards to like the cancer incidences and things like that. And, and our focus is purely on that, and we spend years doing that. And I guess, I'm concerned because we have an aging population, which it's hard to make people understand that that actually will create the increased incidence of cancer in our community because we have a 7% higher than the state average. You know, that's, that has a lot to do with it. And the 20%, a 34% higher smoking rate, things like that. How do we get people to, yes, it's horrible that a lot of us have gotten cancer and, and how do we get them to focus on the, the modifiable risk factors? How do we do, yeah, the prevention strategies that are gonna be much more effective than looking to eliminate, you know, things that we can't really, you know, really assign the, you know, the relative risk of actually, you know, how do we do that?
And that's what this document was meant to do in a sense, is really think about prevention and think about following these tiers of the pyramid and going through, thinking about community health campaigns, changing the policies around the type of food that restaurants may serve, creating farmers' markets, bike lanes, really thinking about getting people up and active. You may have other ideas. Campaigns around quitting smoking.
Yeah, right. And the policies, you know, that we talked about that the Board of Health is working on in terms of limiting e-cigarettes. Right now, e-cigarettes are not regulated by the way regular cigarettes are. So, someone who is under the age of 18, I mean, you could be 10 years old and purchasing e-cigarettes. So, you know, putting policies in place that safeguard health, you know, or one of the other ways. And those are some of the sustainable pieces that we look at too. You know, the, the recovery coach and we're fighting hard. I'm, I'm really confident that we're gonna get the recovery coach here. But we have to think about, you know, if that, if we have a recovery coach, you know, that's a good start, but we need to build from there. And then what is it that the community is gonna contribute? How do we support that? Looking down the road, is it gonna be something supported within the town budget? Or is it gonna be something that's supported with grant funds? So, you know, we're, it's always
And the communicate, the coordination of the care that's required too is concerning.
I mean, I sort of look at the recovery coaches like, perhaps like a sponsor you would have in AA, that it's somebody, you know, when things are getting tough or you're feeling, you know, like you might use again, there's somebody that I can, you know, call and reach out to and that person would be available.
And of course, now that you've, one more thing, with, with the aging population, I know it was mentioned that one of the things is the out-of-pocket expenses for healthcare and things like that. Does, does the CCHI have any pamphlet material or resource material on, there's a lot of resources out there, like the Patient Advocacy Foundation and other places, that people can reduce their out-of-pocket expenses if they only know that? Is there any way that that can, we can?
Get that information.
Yeah.
We can look into that, yeah. I mean, we do have financial assistance and we have lots of materials.
Because that might be something in regards to public health to make our population aware of it, there are ways they can reduce their expenses. And, you know, it's just so hard for people to find that information if it's not there at their fingertips.
Thank you, council. Any further questions from the council?
I've worked with some groups and the coach concept, you know, there is something that we need, but one thing that really strikes me, and I think a lot of the problem derives from, and the youth problem, and as, as we, as they have gotten older, from the 2014 focus group, you had, you know, the state of the mental health and the substance, substance use are the most important issues facing Winthrop. And the youth of Winthrop thinks those are the two biggest problems that they have going forward, their situation. And then the, their closing, their closing line from the youth group is, like they commented on the denial of the use of the, yeah, can't even read tonight, on the denial of the issue by the community as a whole. Something that is, you know, I don't wanna say, I'm trying to think of a kind word, but almost, you know, habitual in communities like Winthrop, nobody wants to admit their kids are drinking, nobody wants to admit this is happening, something, you know, instead of getting, getting in trouble, they want to get them out of trouble, but they don't want to get them helped.
Right.
And that isn't just the youth. Now, if they, you know, it's the adults, the youth are looking at the adults accepting it. And they have no place to go for help. So, it's not just dealing with the kids, you know, the kids level, but it's a whole spectrum that has to be dealt with.
Exactly.
And that's one of the things we've always, you know, always had an issue with the, you know, yeah, one of the, of course, there was, you know, people tend to not get off the island, they stay here primarily to socialize. They, you've gotta get out of the shell.
Right.
And stop, you know, you want to protect your children, you want to protect your youth, but you also have to, you also have to get them help. But it's the parents, the adults in the community who have to realize, who can't be taking that same attitude of that we have, you know, of waking up and saying, you know, we've got, we've got to look at this, because the kids don't think that there's anything there and that it's just coming up on a regular basis.
Yeah, yeah, it's very important. Yeah, yeah, it's very important.
You know, it does sound like it's a culture change and it should be starting at the top or down there as well as addressing it from the youth standpoint.
It's going to come at all.
And, you know, whether that happens through the education system or through the recovery coaches. Relative to the recovery coaches, if someone finds themselves in a situation, gets arrested or whatever, is that something that's mandatory with their, I don't know if the chief can, or is it a volunteer type of a program?
We would, if they were in recovery and working with a recovery coach, it would be easier to get them diverted to drug court. The drug court within wanted their progress with the recovery coach. We're also would work on the other end of the drug court upon graduation, give them support in the community after graduating the drug court program and through the drug court program. So, they have someone outside the court. You know, myself and the judge have talked about this. He's fully involved in this drug court and he wants to be assistance to this community in any way. He loved the idea of street workers working with his drug court. So, you know, we believe that Brown will, the further support those people will need.
And it can also work for people who do not get picked up and hopefully not arrested.
Right, prior to. So intervening prior to.
Exactly.
The whole preventive thing. Any further, yes, no?
Yeah, I just, you know, on Counselor Del Bento's point, you know, he must have read my mind in this, because I was thinking about, there was, I think, some comparison between Martha's Vineyard and the people who actually live there and aren't the ones who own and lead, you know, the actual residents of Martha's Vineyard and Island, okay? And the incidence of domestic violence and alcohol and substance abuse and that whole isolation thing with the island. And I think it's a fair analogy to, you know, when you think, you know, we're almost living on an island and it is this whole mentality of take care of our own and protect our own. And then, this whole thing of denial is very much a part of the island.
As a friend of mine, whose mental health counselor says, denial is a coping mechanism. It might not be the right one, but it's a mechanism to cope with what's going on. The other issue that we run up against with substance use disorders is the stigma that, you know, if somebody's using, I mean, we even use words that put them down, you know, junkie. You know, they're just, they've become a part of society or a member of society who isn't valued anymore as a human being. So, you know, we need to change the way that we think. We need to change, yeah, the way that we talk, the words that we use. And understand that substance use disorders are real. It's a disease. Usually, you know, with the mental health issues that we've talked about, there's usually co-occurring mental health issues as well as substance issues. You know, some folks will argue that the mental health issues actually cause folks to self-medicate, either with alcohol or drugs, to help, you know, address some of that anxiety, depression feelings that they're having.
And vice versa.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. It's like a...
You mentioned AA with sponsors and so forth. Do we have any active NA in town that you know of or is NA effective?
The biggest one that I know of is at the East Boston Social Center and it meets there on a pretty regular basis. I want to say four to five nights a week, but that's probably the most active one. We do have very active AA. There are meetings here in Winthrop seven days a week. So, you can find one as well as, you know, in the neighboring communities. And, you know, when I talk about stigma, sometimes, you know, that's the thing that sort of prevents people from getting into treatment is because they don't want to sort of let their neighbors know that there's an issue in their family. And, you know, when you ask the question to a group of people, like, you know, do you have someone in your family that has a problem with substance? If you don't see every hand go up in that room, you know, it's like, yeah, yeah. Because it really is pretty universal, yeah.
But I think the reason people, as you said, kind of put their head in the sand or they are in denials because they don't know how to help the person. Or, and like you said, the education about there are resources out there. You're trying to change the way, I think that's the issue, is they don't know what else to do. That, you know, their loved one gets arrested, they keep, but there's nothing else they can, you know, there's no other resources to do. They just have to wait till they keep getting arrested or they get into the, you know, there's no system to help.
And we hear the frustration, you know, from the police department, from the fire department and from EMS, you know, the first responders, you know, going over and over again to, you know, the same addresses and, you know, why isn't anything happening? So, we're really listening and we're trying to put some systems in place that change that whole dynamic and, you know, give people some good options other than...
That was encouraging because I know a lot of people are concerned that, well, we just, all we're doing is keeping people. We're saving them. That's all, we're not really, you know, and I think that it's that recovery coach is the system in place. So, it's not just a safety net. It's a direction to move them into getting them help and into recovery instead of just keeping, you know, using Narcan alone and that's it. I think that's...
Okay, thank you very much for your presentation. It wasn't all good news, but it's...
But you know, and the dialogue and, you know, we're talking and we're thinking about it and...
And I think the recognition of it and the fact that it is an illness, there's a stigma attached to it, that you can get help without the stigma. And as Terry said, the most important part, prevention, education, not the enforcement.
And I want to thank Leslie Mash General.
And Pat, Marla, Mary, thank you very much. Very nice presentation.
I think I took a photo of you guys.
Because I know that you're...
Pat, do I dare ask what happened?
Jogging.
Stay away from that healthy stuff.
You're a violent jogger.
Moving on, the minutes from October 21st, 2014 are circulated. Do I have a motion? Motion by Counselor Terry, seconded by Counselor Ray. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor say aye. I oppose, it's unanimous. Thank you.
I believe I'm abstaining. I think I was out.
You were here as present.
I was here as present, okay.
But you weren't. You weren't here because you were going to make a report.
Yeah, I don't think I was here.
So, we're going to amend that and we're going to have Counselor Sanford as absent.
And Counselor Boncor. 20th post.
Okay. So, Counselor Boncor and Counselor Sanford have both abstained. And let's redo the vote. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, it's unanimous. Thank you. Moving on to public comment. Seeing none, moving on to correspondence, of which there is none, on to committee reports. Counselor Sanford.
Okay, just giving you a second here. We had a reporting on an economic development meeting that was held on October 2nd, 2014. It was here at the Harvey Harry Room at 7:00 PM. Attending were committee members, myself and Craig Mail. Also attending was Town Manager James McKenna, Joe Darmalovitz from the Town Manager's Office, Paul McGee, Betsy Shane of the Winthrop Chamber of Commerce, and President Peter Gill. We spoke of the Collins Report that was developed for the town of Winthrop, highlighting strengths and weaknesses in economic development as well as recommendations for moving the town forward. What it is in fact is a master plan of many proportion, I guess, for lack of a better word. But it really focused on economic development and the assets that we have and what we do going forward. The Town Manager provided some insight relative to talking about some anchor tendencies regarding the Winthrop Center. We discussed, which was 68% of shopping happens outside the town of Winthrop, which was kind of a startling number for me. And we talked about how we recapture some of that revenue and grow the economy locally. We discussed marketing Winthrop. Betsy Shane had talked about the chambers initiating PSAs at Logan Airport, which are in fact happening now, which shows Winthrop is a place to visit, a place to live. These are on large screen, TVs or monitors, I guess, for lack, some of them 15 by 10. So, they're really, as you go through some of the terminals, you'll see some of the wide screens. And it's presentations relative to Winthrop and what we have to offer. Everyone feels and felt as though Winthrop's in a good position to attract and build on the assets, both present and going forward in the future. Talked about Metro North Development, which is a part of a consortium that the Town Manager is involved with. And talking about Winthrop and Boston, you know, working off of each other, so to speak, relative to housing and the destination for the town of Winthrop. And it also talks about how Winthrop is in a position, as Charlestown has been in South Boston, to come into a little bit of mini explosion, so to speak, not necessarily population, but with an influx of folks maybe coming here to live or looking relative to being close to Boston. But just a small community that's been kind of hit for many, many years. Talked about bringing speakers in, not only from Gloucester and Salem, and talked about some of the ideas that have worked for them. And talking about what we can do to, again, move us forward through the Town Council and through the Town Manager's Office. Talked about the ferry going forward, the build and the schedule is we're hoping for for next season and some of the management possibilities as we talked about, not only as a commuter ferry, which we talked about, but also is more of a tourism and attraction for bringing people into town, spending money here and visiting some of the local historical areas and islands. Motion to adjourn by Counselor Mail at 8:50 and seconded by myself. And we're scheduling a meeting in the near future.
Thank you, counsel. It sounds like good stuff and it sounds like things are moving forward. I appreciate your efforts and your move on it as well as Mr. McKenna. Thank you. Finance Committee, Counselor Vice President Del Bento.
The Finance Committee met Monday night, November 3rd at 6:45. President were myself and Counselor Terry, also President were Town Manager McKenna and CFO, Tim Gordon. First issue on the agenda was the appropriation of $854,911.16, the premium paid to the town upon the sale of bond issues. Some, Gordon gave us a little presentation on what it is and that is money that was, that we're getting back on the bond sale of the large bonds for the borrowing on the school project. And this money is coming back to the town. It'll put this money aside to offset future borrowing when we do the final borrowing. This borrowing's been a series of short-term and midterm and construction bondings in order to get the most cost-effective bond ratings and bond costs. So, and what this will actually do by dedicating this to that, to that cause, will save us close to $2 million in project financing and interest costs. So, it's something that came out of Finance Committee with a favorable bill recommendation. Hopefully, we vote on it tonight. Also presented were $492 in unpaid bills, a couple of small bills for various departments that will hopefully take up tonight that will also move forward as positive action. He also gave a brief, a quick briefing on the $24,000 motion that's on the agenda for tonight, which is a interest payment on short-term borrowing, which is, what we need to do is, it's a no cost that we have to move the money from the project to the general fund in order to pay it properly for accounting purposes. And if we do this tonight, that'll actually give us the ability to stay in good standing, have our interest, our first interest payment made on time, avoid any late fees penalties and have our bond purchases view us in good light. We adjourn the meeting and that's our report.
Thank you, counsel. Rules and Orders, Counselor Boncor.
The Rules and Orders Committee met at Thursday, October 30th at 7:00 PM at the EB Newton Cultural Center. President were myself, Counselor Varong and Counselor President Peter Gill and Town Manager Jim McKenna. There were two items on the agenda. The first item was the vehicle storage restrictions that had been on the agenda for quite some time. It had gone back to the Planning Board since it's a zoning bylaw. We received it back from the Planning Board. We discussed it and we, it's a motion to accept the motion coming from the Planning Board as was amended at our meeting. And I will be asking to pass that motion under all business. The second issue was to adopt a public space rental and use policy. After much discussion, we voted to prepare a public space rental and use policy, which will be presented in a motion, I believe, under all business, to allow the Town Manager to rent town property in accordance with a fee schedule that we will be setting tonight. A fee schedule has to be set by the Town Council. The agreement that the Town Manager put into our Dropbox looks very sufficient. And once we set the policy, you should be able to use that. Motion to adjourn was put in at 7:35. It was adjourned.
Thank you, counsel. Moving on to Town Manager's report. Mr. McKenna.
Yes, good evening.
Counselor, please.
Yes.
Yes, counsel.
We did have a DPW meeting.
It's not on the agenda. I know that Craig had mentioned it, but I'd like to cover it on the agenda as opposed to, unless the council wants to.
Okay, just our committee reports, but, yeah, we could wait for it.
We'll hold it till, it'll be on the agenda. Thank you. Moving on, Mr. Manager.
Sure. Thank you and good evening. I'm just so thrilled that we finally got a chance to have that discussion that's been waiting for a while to have about the draft report. I know you folks had that report for some time and I'm just grateful that we finally had that conversation. It's really impressive when you look at it and its complexity and its bearing on the community, how important that study will be, not just to get us all on the same page, but to move forward in all of these very important directions. So, thank you for entertaining that conversation. Like that, I'm inviting the Collins Center, as was mentioned in the Economic Development Report, out to speak to you and address you directly with a final report on the Economic Development Strategic Plan for the town. And I'm hopeful that we can get them here on our November 18th agenda. So, that request has been made. And like the conversation we had tonight, I hope we can have the same one on these issues that we've been talking about in the Economic Development Committee. I have begun about four months ago with the assistance of my staff, particularly Tangi Safuni and Al Aghi, the development of a, how to open a business and/or a restaurant in Winthrop. This came out of the conversation that we had at the chamber a number of months ago. The need to clarify the processes and procedures of the community. It seems like it's a bit of a, you know, myriad of twists and turns one takes in trying to get all of the permits and approvals and navigating the various town offices and what's required of a new business to start up in Winthrop. And we felt that it was important to do what we could to try to synthesize and, you know, put in a simple form those processes and procedures. And I believe we're coming to the point of being able to present that. It'll be a handbook that we'll be developing and hopefully by next meeting, we'll have it finished. That will essentially show, you know, a simplification of how to navigate true town government and, you know, what one needs to do depending on the business that they want to open. You know, we've heard for some time, you know, Winthrop is not friendly to business. We didn't, we don't believe that. We believe we are friendly and in fact, we're going to be friendlier. And the best way to do that is to communicate effectively how we do business in Winthrop and how anyone can open a business in Winthrop if they know what to do and how to do it. And to, in the interest of making that simple and easy, we're putting this formatted handbook together, complete with all the permits and all the directions and who to talk to and all the contact information, all together in one place and available for anyone who wants to use it. And we'll have it on our website as well. But I wanted to tee this out because we're getting to the point where we're going to have that prepared for our next meeting and it's exciting.
It's a huge step forward because that's been a frustration of where do you go when? First, second, third, and it's a huge development. I appreciate, I'm sure the council...
Counselor President. I think just seeing, I think a lot of people have ideas on businesses and they may even have the monetary means to make it happen. But unless they see, and it can be very confusing if you're a novice, have a great idea, have the funding, but once you see it in black and white, I think it makes sense. Once you visualize, I'll go talk to folks and you get confused along the process. I think what this is, is an important document for people just to make things a little bit more simple for them to be able to navigate through.
Really good.
And as, you know, again, it's a work in progress. We'll have a draft for the council. If you have any input, thoughts, we could do something better or say something, you know, more clear. know, more clearly. Please weigh in, and we're all ears on any constructive.
I mean, I think it'd be great as an algorithm to put eventually on the web with access and links to the forms that are needed and required and all that stuff.
Right, exactly, exactly.
Any further comments from the council? Moving on.
You may notice that the park is, at Coughlin Park, is well underway. In fact, we're hopeful that this week, that we will see a core of the surface for the base of the equipment. I know, I'm pleased to see that so many of our DPW were available over the past weekend, and a few fellows, even former employees of the DPW, jumped in and pulled a shovel and did some things as a donation to the town, because they were so enthusiastic about the progress of the park. And so it's coming together nicely. I took a spin out there yesterday with Steve Cowler, and I'm very happy with the quality of work that's being done there. It will be a premier park for this community, no doubt about it, and a strong investment going forward, and we're hopeful to have that completed in the next few weeks. Mindful of the weather, of course, and what other conditions that we have to contend with. Also, if you haven't had a chance, I'd suggest you take a walk down to Crestad Park and take a look at the progress there. It's impressive. I think that whole area is really coming together nicely. Not only the private investment of new restaurant and what's going on in Long Crestad, but the park itself is getting some finishing touches of landscape and walkways, and a new rubber surface as well. And so I have to commend the DCR for accepting that responsibility as impact compensation of the community and making a substantial investment in that neighborhood, and really will be a gem of a park for the community as well. And that will really complete a full sweep of improvements throughout the community of our public parks and spaces. You know, now it's going to be important for us, as we budget going forward, to keep them up and include in our operating budget adequate resources to maintain those parks and fix them as we go along.
I'm going to jump in with a pat on the back to that one, too. As you know, the parks have been a soft spot in my heart, and between itself, the DPW, the Parks Committee, and now DCR hopping on, too, it's, we've seen a total transformation of every single park in town, from real tough condition to real nice, attractive condition. I commend everybody involved. Looks good.
Yeah, it's been a full, you know, effort by everybody, and, you know, the public, the committee, the, you know, the folks have taken a particular role in advocating for parks. It's a wonderful statement of the enthusiasm of the community. And we have put in the Dropbox a capital plan update, but we will be seeing a revision to that over the next week, as we've submitted to the town departments a request to have them take a second look at their capital request in anticipation of preparing our plan for this year. And that's out to the department heads. They'll get those back to me by the end of next week, I hope, and that'll be updated, that five-year plan. And so, you know, I, stay tuned. I'm hopeful that the Capital Committee will be scheduled to review that plan sometime at the end of November, in anticipation of setting your agenda for budget recommendations to me. In that same light, I know that there were a number of items that we were not able to complete as far as final reconciliation of the FY 14, 15, rather budget. And those, several were suggested that we consider once free cash was certified, and I have made a list of those on this handout to you this evening. Few of them are new additions. I have to say that the cupola for Town Hall is a new addition, but it, if you've all seen the wonderful job that the church across the way did on their cupola restoration, and then just turn your head 180 degrees and see the dire condition of our cupola on Town Hall, it screams for attention, and it's time, I think, that we address this and do it in earnest as a project this spring. So I've asked Rich Sofuni and Steve Cowler to take a fresh look at the cupola, get some estimates on what it would cost to restore it, what our challenges are with the cupola. I understand that Rich Farino and his committee have a report on the cupola that we're going to take a look at. There are some historical issues that we need to contend with, but also potentially some lead issues that also are concerning. So we'll be looking at that and seeing how we can, you know, improve, or if there are any grants available as well. But addressing that cupola is important for us, as well as completing a number of the other projects that we have kept on the front burner but have not adequately funded. We have a very strong request from the DPW Director Cowler for two utility vehicles for snow removal, and so that may be coming in front of the council sooner than later, given the state of the season that we're at, and understanding that, you know, there are some serious deficiencies in terms of some of the utility vehicles available. Perhaps the DPW Committee will report out on that issue as well. And, you know, completing a couple of the other items that you've seen before but have not yet been funded. E.B. Newton elevation roofing, the vital records digitizing that we've discussed in the past, the MIS, emergency backup batteries we've discussed, and disaster recovery equipment and software, which was an audit finding against the town, so we think that that's a crucial issue. And then the voting booths that were, in fact, completed and paid for out of town clerk funds, but now she's looking for reimbursement for that. So that's the short list of needs that we see, you know, immediate and in need of addressing. So just wanted to tee those items up with you and suggest that the Capital Improvement Committee schedule a meeting in the near future to take those up, and that the DPW Committee also may consider.
Counselor Varong, you're the chairman of the Capital.
Sure, I will be scheduling a meeting.
And maybe ask Counselor Varong. Council Mail, well, you're on that same. And I don't know if a joint meeting makes sense for that, or if maybe two separate?
Oh, I think.
But I'll let you handle it.
I'll handle it. Maybe two separate meetings.
All set?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Moving on to Old Business. Vice President, Dobento.
Coming from the Finance Committee is a motion to appropriate, the town appropriate, $854,911.16 from the premium paid to the town upon the sale of bonds issued for the purpose of paying costs of the so-called middle high school building project, Fund 856, which bonds are the subject of the proposition two-and-a-half debt exclusion, to pay costs of the project being financed by such bonds and to reduce the amount authorized to be borrowed for such project but not yet issued by the town by the same amount. Take any other action relative here, too.
Coming from committee, there's no need for a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Not all those in favor say aye. Opposed, unanimous. Thank you. Vice President Dobento.
Coming from the Finance Committee is a move that, to move that the town council votes to appropriate the payment of prior year bills in the aggregate of $492.60 from the current year budget for each department as noted. From the Ring for Supplies and Equipment, account 6725542005, $140. From Board of Health, Supplies and Equipment, 0151052542005, $60. Human Resources, Supplies and Equipment, 0115352542005, $292.60.
Coming from committee, excuse me, motion from committee does not require a second. Is there any discussion? Not all those in favor say aye. Opposed, unanimous. Counselor Van Corre.
Yes, motion from the Rules and Ordinance Committee on motor vehicle storage, which has been approved by the Planning Board at public hearing, and amended by the Planning Board, and then re-amended by the Rules and Ordinance Committee. Motion by the Rules and Ordinance Committee is to delete Winthrop Town Ordinance 17.12.080A and 17.12.100A, and replace them with a new 17.12.080, storing motor vehicles restrictions. Subsection A, no person, business, or entity shall have, keep, or store more than one unregistered, uninsured, or inoperable motor vehicle, boat, trailer, camper, or recreational vehicle, ungaraged, on his, her, or their premises for more than 72 hours. Nor shall any unregistered, uninsured, or inoperable motor vehicle, boat, trailer, camper, or recreational vehicle be stored in the yard, front, or side, as defined in Section 17.04.050 of the Winthrop Town Ordinance, of a residential or commercial business, except lots duly licensed in accordance with Winthrop Ordinance 17.24.080 for rental or sales, and marinas and boat storage lots duly licensed by the State of Massachusetts. Subsection B, the penalty for violation of this section shall be $50 per offense after 48 hours' notice and for each subsequent 48-hour period thereafter, until such violations have been cured. Also, because we have amended 17.12.100, 17.12.100B will now be recertified as 17.12.100, without the B.
Thank you, Council. Coming from committee, excuse me, there's no need for a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Not all those in favor say aye. Opposed, unanimous. Thank you. Counselor Van Corre.
Thank you. The Rules and Ordinance Committee is presenting a motion to the council to set a public space rental and use policy. And this is not a bylaw, this is just a policy that we're putting on the books to give direction and a fee schedule to the town manager in renting property owned by the town of Winthrop. The public space rental and use policy, the Winthrop Town Council hereby sets the fee schedule, allowing the Winthrop Town Manager to rent town buildings or portions thereof for both private and public events. All renters shall complete a rental agreement. The town manager may, in his discretion, rent the Robert A. DeLeo Senior Center, the library, and the town hall to renters for four-hour events, after receiving $125 custodial fee. In addition, private entities shall pay $75. Nonprofit groups shall pay $60. The town manager may, in his discretion, rent the Ferry Terminal Building and the E.B. Newton Cultural Center to renters for four-hour events for a fee of $75 to private entities and to nonprofit groups for a fee of $60. No custodial fee will be charged for these two properties, but renters will be charged a $60 cleaning fee if they don't clean up after use. Any additional hours will be charged at $30 an hour in other places. Motion by the Rules and Ordinance Committee to adopt this policy.
Coming from committee, there's no need for a second. Is there any discussion on the motion, Counselor?
Would you want the $60 cleaning fee as a deposit that's refunded at the time of a?
We set it up that it would be billed after the event, and we had discussed that possibility at the meeting, and the feeling was that most people are going to be, you know, diligent in cleaning up after themselves, and if not, we have the ability to bill them after we know who we rented it to, we have an agreement, and the agreement will say that.
To further answer the question, it's almost an accounting nightmare to take in the money that.
No, no, I just wanted to ask a question.
But it was seriously discussed, of course. And I think the logic, the basic logic would be if you.
If you're renting from the town.
One-stroke-your-own type thing.
Okay.
Any further comments, questions on the discussion on the motion?
Why $70 and $60, just any particular, I know you had said you didn't want it to be too expensive, I didn't know if there was.
We felt it should be a differentiated between nonprofit and private use.
No, I just meant as far as maybe higher for both, or, you know.
No, we felt that these are public spaces, and in fact, we get a lot of requests by not private, but nonprofit and general organizations to use the spaces. We didn't want to be too heavy on our fees, knowing that they're not making a profit, and we want to cover our costs.
Any further discussion? Not all those in favor say aye. Opposed, unanimous. Thank you. Moving on to new business. Counselor Terry.
I'd like to make a motion, if we could, to take out of order one of the items on new business, that we purchased Chromebooks, a discussion of purchase of Chromebook cots for middle school.
If there's no objection from the council, we'll move the discussion of purchase of the Chromebooks to the first item on the agenda under new business. Is there any objection? If not, Counselor Terry.
Thank you. I would like to make a motion and have a discussion, sign an emergency motion, to buy two Chromebook cots for the Arthur T. Cummings School, or middle school, really, right now. And I'll give you a little background on this. A Chrome cot, or just a little information also, a Chrome cot is basically, it's basically a computer room on wheels. It's a cot that would hold 32 small laptop computers or Chromebooks. The cot is a rechargeable cot, so if you plug it in overnight or during the afternoon, it would recharge all the computers. Because of the restructuring and the transition that's been going on, there's been a lot of changes in rooms and room assignments, and the Cummings School has unfortunately lost their computer room due to space. Now they have had computers put into the library, which has helped, but it hasn't been the same feeling, and now they're having older grades in there where the technology could really be used. The superintendent has a goal to have, and the principal, who's here tonight, who I introduce shortly, has had a goal to have two Chromebook cots per grade. Now roughly each grade has about 150 kids in it. Two Chromebook cots would be 64 Chromebooks, which isn't one for everybody, but it gives a lot of flexibility to the teachers to do a lot of positive things with these Chromebooks. I did go to the School Building Assistance Committee to ask them to purchase two, and they did pass that last week. We were lucky, tremendously lucky through the town to have a donation by Mr. Colin Cash, who, which also purchased a cot. So I believe there are up to four cots now, and I thought it would be extremely relevant and great educationally for us to have the possibility of purchasing two of those cots for them. The cost of the cots are about $9,800 per cot, so it would be roughly a little under $20,000. I don't know if anybody was fortunate enough to watch the school committee meeting two weeks ago, where Mr. Harrity made his presentation on MCAS, and he talked about the need for technology and how it can be so beneficial to our children. And we've put these, we've put the children in, you know, some circumstances that ideally we wouldn't want to. We've had a lot of transition and a lot of kids changing schools and such, and we just think that this is something that would enhance their education in a very timely manner. With the okay and the counter president, I'd like to introduce Mr. Ryan Harrity, who's the new principal of the Cummings School, and have him in on this discussion.
Hi, Ryan.
Would you like to make a motion and include Ryan in on the discussion of the motion, or would you rather have him before the motion?
Before the motion.
Okay, Ryan, welcome.
Thank you, everyone, for having us here tonight. We just wanted to, you know, bring forth a request for some additional support. We found something in our school that's very effective, that works, and we have the data to back it up, the evidence that shows that when our students have access to the technology, we're able to close the achievement gap for a lot of our students. And, you know, it's a very valuable resource, especially where we're headed, and, you know, I hear you guys talk tonight about, you know, economic. I hear you guys talk tonight about, you know, economic development and where our town's headed, and, you know, the educational system obviously has to be at the forefront of that and building a strong foundation for the students, and, you know, that's going to be something, obviously, that'll attract a lot of people to the town, and so that's what we're working on, really putting our students at the forefront of that, and, you know, just ask them for your support.
Okay, Ryan. You want to go ahead and make the...
I would make a motion that the town ought to free cash purchase two Chromebook cots for the use of the Arthur T. Cummings School.
Do we have a second on the motion?
I'll second.
Counsel Boyajan seconds the motion. Now, we need to go for a wave of the rules because the motion is on the floor.
And I know Counsel Boncor hates this, but I will ask my fellow counselors to release the finance committee from there.
Close your eyes and go like this. Motion by counsel at two, Counsel Boyajan, you want to release the finance committee, but you also want to waive the rule.
Yes.
I'll second that again.
It's two separate votes. Can we have a vote to waive the rule to B, I believe it is?
Yes.
By Counsel Leteri, second, by Counsel Boyajan. Any discussion? Phil? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. The second motion.
To eliminate the...
To waive the finance committee recommendation.
From their obligation, yes.
Any discussion on... A second to waive the finance committee. Second by Counsel Vice President Delvento. Discussion? Not all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Motion. On the motion, by Counsel Leteri, on the original motion, is there any discussion?
I did have a question about utilization of them. Are the teachers trained enough and are they utilizing the Chromebooks now and, you know, or are they, you know, how are they utilizing them now, and are all the teachers trained to use them, I guess, is what I'm wondering.
Yeah, so that's, I would ask that exact same question, you know, because you don't want to invest in something and then just say, okay, here's a Chromebook, you know, we hope that it works. And so, you know, we've put a lot of thought into this process, and we're very fortunate because we have teachers that have really embraced the technology, and they're on board with it, and they want to learn, and they want to use it, and they're very eager to do this. And we're also very lucky because we have teachers that are experts at using it in our building. Yesterday, we had a professional development day for voting day while everyone was voting. We were in different classrooms throughout the school. We had various stations set up. Several of those stations were focused on technology integration in our classrooms, and, you know, Mrs. Leteri ran one of those, ran one of those stations on something called Khan Academy, which is a math remediation program, combined with something else called Ten Marks, and out of all the stations, we let teachers pick which stations they wanted to attend. Out of all the stations that we had, Khan Academy was the number-one station that was picked by teachers, and she told us that teachers want the technology, they want to embrace the technology, they want to learn how to use it. So yesterday, you know, almost all of our teachers now are trained in utilizing the technology efficiently in their classrooms, setting up the accounts, making sure students can access it, and they know how to get the permission slips in order so that parents can get on board, and so using it, I don't think is going to be a problem, but it's just, we, the resource is scarce now because everybody said, oh, I want that in my room too.
Thank you, Terry.
Counsel Leteri.
And what I will say is, what they do right now, basically, is a clipboard, is a signup sheet for, to have one of these cots, to use it in their class, and the clipboard, as soon as it goes out, it gets filled up right away, and a lot of the teachers aren't able to access the technology. I've also talked with Vinnie Ruaco, and thanks to him and his M.I.T. staff, his I.T. staff. He, you know, I wanted to make sure if we're purchasing these Chromebooks that we have connectivity there, that they can easily be used, and he has assured me that each floor now can access two hundred laptops at a time, so we do have the capability for connectivity, which is very important. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Any further discussion by the council?
You just mentioned Counselor Mail is a big fan of Khan Academy and was one of the big pushes for that.
He's a huge fan.
Mr. Manager.
That's what I was...
Okay, great.
I didn't want to let this conversation go without mentioning Counselor Mail.
Yes.
And I've discussed this with Counselor Mail, and he's very much a proponent of this, and I know if he was here, he would be supportive.
Definitely.
And I need to say, in my role as counsel president, I also serve in the school committee as a liaison, and I think this move is showing a tremendous partnership between the two, and that's something we've been working on for five years, and it's moving in a great forward direction, and I really strongly support this too. This does require a vote, a unanimous vote, because it requires seven positive votes, and we only have seven members here tonight. So Denise, would you take a roll call, please?
Counsel Calhoun. Counsel Sanford.
Yes.
Counsel Boncor.
Yes, I'm always happy to help the school. Thank you.
Counsel LeBaron.
Yes.
Counsel Leteri.
Yes.
Counsel Boyajan.
Yes.
Vice President Delvento.
Yes.
President Gill.
Yes.
Thank you.
Moving on.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Don. Counsel Delvento, Vice President Delvento.
Real technology's got to come back. You want the sheet?
No, I got them all. I've got them here.
Put you right there.
Yeah.
Great.
Thank you.
The first motion I'm going to make is to transfer twenty-four thousand six hundred forty dollars from the middle school, high school, middle school fund balance reserve for future debt account with the capital fund, eight fifty-six, a general fund for the purpose of funding the balance of short-term interest, the bond anticipatory note, or take any other action relative here too.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Leteri. Discussion on the motion.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to amend the motion to include language that the finance committee be absolved from, be released from its, from meeting on this item, and if anybody asks questions, we can meet tonight and discuss it tonight.
Did you want to make that as part of the motion, or do you want to make it as separate? Part of the motion? Okay. The motion's been, do you second the amendment?
Yes.
Motion's been made and seconded by Counsel Vice President Delvento, seconded by Counsel This, because it's an emergency...
No, this is, it was advertised.
Okay.
It was properly noted, notified.
All right.
I'm just going to say the reason why we need to, I'd really like to see this done tonight. This is moving money, this is something that we need, not need to do, we really should do. It's moving twenty-four thousand six hundred forty dollars from the capital fund, the reserve, the balance of the reserve for future debt. It's in the capital fund. We need to move it to the general fund to write the check. It makes the books clean, and the bonding companies, I'd like to see us doing things properly. We've been very, Tim's been working very close with our bonding companies, that's why we saw the bond premium, which is going to save us, you know, close to two million dollars in the overall cost of financing the project, and this will also keep them in very happy, we'll have no late charges, we'll be paying, taking all the discounts, all the benefits we can possibly take.
Oh, yeah, it saves the late fee.
It saves the late fee. It keeps our credit perfect standing with the bonding agency.
Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. Vice President. Delvento.
Okay, we have a whole bunch of other ones.
I'd like to motion, we refer them all to the finance committee.
I'd like to make a motion to refer all remaining monetary motions on tonight's agenda to the finance committee.
I'll second that motion. All those in favor of referring all the remaining motions regarding finance to the finance committee, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Can you set up a meeting on Wednesday? Maybe some council...
Probably.
Okay. Okay, next on the new business, the financial projection for the, this can be a sixteen town managers' report is in the packet, and it is available to the public. Did you want to make any comment on it, or just that it is available?
We certainly look forward to the input of the council as we prepare our budget schedule for the year, and this tis the season for the council to formulate its directives to me, so I look forward to your input.
Okay, and I'm asking the finance, for the council budget goals, the finance committee at that same meeting where they're doing all the financial transfers, to improve budget goals.
We can put that on agenda.
Which we will then present all of the financial transfers and the budget goals to the council next week, next meeting on eleven eighteen. Okay, so it takes care of all that. Appointments. We have circulated applications for appointment to the Citizens Finance Advisory Commission. Mr. Gus Matucci, he was a former school committee person, and I believe served on that board at one time in the past.
No, he didn't.
No, he didn't? Okay. So I'm appointing Gus, and I'm appointing him for the remainder of Mr. Rotundo's term. Mr. Rotundo has resigned due to business commitments. So Mr. Matucci's appointment will be until June thirty of fifteen. Could I have a motion to affirm? Counsel Leteri makes the motion. Vice President Delvento, second. Any discussion on the motion? Not all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Kenneth Goodwin, thirty, Tylenstone Road, has been working, ex officio kind of on the beautification committee, I didn't know he's been working along with them, and Alan, Chairman Alan Peabody recommended that he be appointed.
Who is that?
His name is Ken Goodwin, he lives on Tylenstone Road. He's a flight attendant at the Delta. Very, he's young, very interested, active guy, and he's very, very interested in the beautification of the community. So I'm going to appoint Ken to a three-year term. It'll actually be two and a half years instead, so Denise, if you could note that date for his expiration of his term. And could I have a motion to affirm?
Motion.
Those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. At the next meeting, we've had a resignation from Susan Bolster from the Northeast Metropolitan Regional Vocational School District School Committee, and we published that on the website as a vacancy, and I've had, I don't know, pass another one down. I've had two applications on that, and the process is that the school committee and the council meet as a joint meeting, and they make the appointment as a joint appointment, similar to what we did with the library people a few weeks back. And it is the, it's the charge and it's the direction of, it isn't addressed in our charter specifically, but it is addressed in the Northeast Regional Vocational School Rules, and the process is the local council and the local school committee make the appointment. So we're going to do that as a special meeting at the beginning of our regular meeting on the eighteenth.
Do we have the two nominees?
Yes, and I'm going to send out their applications. It's, one of the nominees is the Gunn Ammstead, who's our school resource officer and a local police officer, and the other applicant is Michael, not Michael, Christopher Bolster, who is nephew to Susan Bolster. So we have the, and I will circulate those applications.
Mr. President?
Yes.
And I add, if I'm correct, that's an elected position, this is to fill the term up until the next, what's called election.
Correct. It'll be, that term, her term ran for three more years, but the rule is like on ours it goes to the next election, so it'll be one year and then have to run. Thank you. Okay, and the, there is still a, I'm about to confirm, oh, we did that, didn't we?
Did.
Okay. There's still a vacancy on the Board of Assessors to fill Scott Concell's term, he also is resigning for business job reasons, and that would be a six-month. I advertised that, I do not have an application on it. Moving on, poll petition for the Crest Ave parking lot. There is a poll petition to, if you're familiar with the new Crest Ave parking lot, there's a telephone poll, it's right in the middle of the parking lot where it used to be, and they need to move it. In order to move it, they need to have a petition. Next meeting, at the beginning of the meeting, we'll have a public hearing and then vote on that poll petition. Counsel LeBaron.
Sure, I would like to motion that we discuss the possibility of a traffic study concerning the truck traffic, well, and all the traffic really, coming in and out of Deer Island. It's been something that we've discussed many years ago even on the DPW committee, the possibility of speed bumps, or, I went into the town manager's office after we had the MWRA community meeting about a week or so ago, a couple of weeks ago, and I asked him about the possibility of putting maybe some poles or concrete pillars on the sidewalks, you know, to prevent the trucks from jumping the curbs, and he and I went back and forth with it a little bit, and like to see a traffic study so that we don't approach this haphazardly, and we can see what, from a professional aspect, what can be done, and not something that may or may not work. You know, additionally speaking, I would like to, I would hope that in our negotiation with the MWRA and their mitigation package, that possibly they could cover this, but if they don't, that the council pick up whatever cost that that might be. So I was looking for some support on that motion.
Thank you, Counsel LeBaron. So why don't we have a motion for a discussion? I don't think we actually need a motion, but I think, let's do a motion for a discussion.
Second.
Motion by Counsel LeBaron, seconded by Counsel Boyajan. All those in favor of opening for discussion? Say aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. Counsel.
I think we, the probability of getting an elevator funded quickly is not going to happen, and I think we, for at least to get out of the box, data collection, I think maybe we can look at funding something, the town manager can start taking a look at that. I think it needs to be a, also a volume count type study, and I'm not sure if we want to see in two locations, so it can actually start to differentiate, one at Deer Island, I'm not sure if we want to say maybe in the gate area, or maybe differentiate somewhere up on Taps Ave, so we can see what's traffic for the facility and what's traffic for the general area, so that we can actually be able to, when we talk, we can have, say, it's this percent of the truck, it's this percent during what time of the day, and we'll have the data. I think at this point, you know, we can look at some traffic counting devices, but we need to, need some good data collection so that we can really talk to them and have some teeth in what we're saying to them. That's kind of critical, so if we can maybe talk to Steve, see if we can get, I don't know if we have a, if you have a design of that, but we're currently...
We just, we do have some data that I can forward to you. One was from Taps Ave, a strip late a week, and the other one is from Euro Beach, stripped by NASDOT, that's been late for a week. We did this in preparation of thinking of mitigation, so we, just so you know, we do have...
Do we have differentiated, do we have like the time?
We have a time and classification.
Time and classification.
Has that, has that T-SAC committee looked at this area?
Well, the T-SAC committee, it's always looking at this area, we've looked at the whole Shirley Street area, but I think as the council has said, this needs a more aggressive traffic engineer here.
Yes.
Because T-SAC, we're relying on our personal experiences day to day, but we're not certified in the engineering aspect of stop signs and crosswalks, and, you know, again, the biggest thing is the twenty mile an hour sign down there that we don't, it's not in our regulations, and it's, we never went to ask DPW to get that approved, therefore it doesn't exist. So that's one of the issues, we could actually have the engineer rectify for us moving forward.
So would the suggestion be that you could, you could make your information available to, and we would hire a professional traffic engineer as opposed to doing anything?
If you need another strip laid, we certainly can lay it a dozen times.
I'm glad we have the data, that was my concern.
Do we have that equipment, though, ourselves?
No, we asked for assistance from Steve Callen, reaches out to another agency that lent it to us. They strip it, and they gave us the reports.
Counsel Boyajan.
I would go with, I think Vice President Delvento had said, I would go that we fund it and then maybe ask for, if we can ask the MWRA, so we don't delay this further waiting to negotiate the cost, and that, I forget the traffic expert the town hired in regards to the casino, I think he was excellent, that he may be a very good option if that, and I also, were you thinking more of the impact on the community versus right at the gate, or doing both, or, I'm much more interested in the impact it's having on the sidewalks in the, in the community than just at the gate.
Throw the chair.
Just Chief Flanagan had some input as a...
Just real quick, we have a meeting next Wednesday, and we did sit with Fred in the manager. I think he's a hundred, it won't take a vote of the board, he thinks he already has the authority to do it, but I just hope we don't narrow the scope of it. It should be signage, width of the roads, parking on the roads, crosswalks, lighting, proper DOT signage. It should be signage, width of the roads, parking on the roads, crosswalks, lighting, proper DOT signage. You know, we don't even know what we don't know on the truck. So we, you know, so my thing is, if we could have till Wednesday, even though we would have a say, I mean, it wouldn't be the MWRA's report. It would be truly an independent report. But what we're talking about doing though, the new lighting, the streetlights, you know, I think we should be looking for them to properly light their truck. That might only take 120 streetlights off our bill, but it's still, I think we need to take the whole scope of the project. You know, intersections that we shouldn't have trucks on, how to resolve those intersections. And the DOT has the info on it.
So is, is this something you feel that, that?
It's been discussed numerous times since the meeting at Deer Island. It's been discussed in the manager's office.
Okay.
And we got a wink and a nod that it was done right away.
So your suggestion is that, that we all want to do it, but we should wait until next meeting before we?
Well, before you, you know, I can come back and like to know by when.
Before we put a price on it, because right now we have no price.
Right.
I have no idea.
Right.
What it's going to cost.
So if, if you could get something prepared for us for next meeting?
Yes.
Does that meet with you, Paul?
That, that would be fine. I just wanted to add a couple of points in terms of trucks jumping the curbs. I discussed with the town manager also, you know, not only the possibility of maybe the fence that's similar to Walden Street or these concrete pillars and poles. But the idea once again of some type of removable speed bump, sort of, the previous objection to the speed bump was, was that it made it difficult to plow. And that would not only help with the truck traffic, but even some, you know, private people, you know, residents that want to go down and enjoy Deer Island and people from out of town, who tend to speed when they come out of that area. So I, I want to look at everything and I want the possibility that residents could email in their own suggestions as well.
I see Ms. Manning and Ms. Capuchia both here. And if there's no objection from the council, if either one of those ladies would like to have any comment here, I would accept it. If not?
All, as I would just say is to Councilor Verone, excuse me, that I just appreciate a lot of, you know, point resident per se, so some of the issues are down the point. But, you know, as a resident of the town, I think it's great that you are listening to the citizens and that you are taking action. So I applaud you for doing that and for listening and for starting to, you know, get this process started. And of course to, you know, Paul, you know, just aware, obviously now that Paul's been working on this, you know, with Fred last week in MWRA. I just think it's, it's great to get this started. But again, I think seeing someone on the council becoming involved, you know, with the concerns of Deer Island and the MWRA, and actually lending your voice and what your suggestions are. I'm hoping the council as a whole will quite frankly follow your lead and really get involved on issues with regards to MWRA because, and the island, because it's crucial to the whole town. So I applaud you for doing that.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Second on what she says.
Okay, good. So I don't think we need a motion at this point?
No.
Okay. Counselor LaTieri.
Several years back when we started the whole transformation of government here, we had the Charter Commission. One of the items we discussed in length at the Charter Commission, several members are still with us now. One of the items we discussed at length was the, how to merge the schools and the town together. And one of the, and what we came up with was the council president role, where the council president would also serve on the school committee. And, you know, I know people are really busy. They have a lot to do. They, they try to watch as many meetings as they can. But I think it would be important and I would like to adjust our agenda to, to an included agenda item called School Update, which the council president could give us each meeting. And it would, you know, kind of highlight the stuff that's going on at the school committee meetings and also any insight that he might have into the schools. And it gives the public an opportunity at a, at a different time to, to try to get up to date on the schools. And it gives us as councilors an opportunity to get up to date on the schools. So I would like to see if we can, you know, add an agenda item to our current agenda called School Update, our School Department Update.
So. I have to say, in the discussion, that I agree 100% that I, I do occasionally put school reports in, but I think it makes all kinds of sense to do it all the time. And to have it as an agenda item instead of just sliding it in under public comment. And I am happy to support that and make a report at every meeting. And in fact, I will make a report tonight under public comment with the permission of the council. I'll slide ahead and report. Counselor?
Now, is this, just as a question to my fellow counselor, is this something that we want to do under committee reports? Is, not, is school committee report or is it?
No, I think it would be.
Its own separate?
I think after town, I mean, my idea, but it can be open for discussion, is after town manager's report, there'd be a school committee report. And it would come from the council president.
I think that's an excellent idea and I'm fully in support of it.
Okay. And, and do we need, do we need to refer that, counselor? Or can we just go ahead and vote it?
Well, just a change in the rules. I, I think that's simple to change, doesn't it have to go into committee? I think we could make a motion to, to add section eight A to the agenda. Under town manager's report, eight A, school committee report. I mean, make that motion.
And Counselor LaTieri just seconded the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. We're going to make that a separate item.
Amending the rules.
Right after town manager's report.
Right after.
Okay.
School Department update.
Amending rule four by adding section eight A into the agenda, school committee report.
What is eight A? I don't understand.
Eight is the town manager's report.
Okay.
So eight A would be school committee, otherwise you're going to change all the numbering.
Okay, I was just thinking, could we make it nine so that it would be a specific?
Anything that listens.
All right, so we'll make it eight A. Okay. All right. All those in favor of amending the agenda for the town council meetings by adding eight A, school committee report? Or should we say council president's report from the? No, just school committee report, okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. And now I'm going to take the opportunity to give a school update, because there was some good action at the school committee meeting the other night. The, the new school, middle high school, is on schedule and on budget. They're pouring the concrete. Right now, these past two weeks, they've been pouring. And they say that as long as they have the concrete poured on schedule before the freeze, which they say they will, then they'll work on the steel all winter. So not only are they on schedule, but they're on budget. So I think that's a, that's a tremendous thing. We have to hope that they, that they stay there. They also reported on the, on the Paul and Norma Facella Scholarship, the very substantial scholarship that has been awarded to the town. And they have a meeting of the executives of the estate. And hopefully will have money available for scholarships this year. It being such a sizable amount of money and coming from an, from an estate, they want to make sure that they do everything properly. Very enthusiastic comments about the football team, seven and one undefeated.
Seven and oh.
Seven and oh. Seven and oh, I'm sorry, seven and oh. That's what I meant. And, and moving on through, through playoffs at this point. Soccer team doing well. The cheerleaders just got a, won a, a championship, not statewide, it was conference wide. The, Mr. Harity, who was, was here tonight, Craig, Counselor Mail, at the last meeting spoke of his presentation about the MCAS. And that the, the focus on these presentations, which was, one followed up with Mrs., Mrs. Pearson from the Gorman School. And they have a plan of attack. It wasn't just a report. It was, this is the report, this is what we intend to do and this is what our outcomes, our intended outcomes are. Very, very substantial, impressive report by both of them. The police department took the students from the eighth grade, I believe it was, to Spectacle Island on a field trip last week, volunteer. And from what I understand, it worked out very, very well. And they, they, as Counselor LaTieri said earlier, had purchased the two book cots. So we call it Chromebooks.
Chromebooks.
And, and I'm sure that they will be pleased that we did follow that up tonight. So that's my school committee report and I will give one at each meeting. If there is no further new business, public comment. And if there is no public comment, just a couple of updates on what's coming up. November 11th, that's next Tuesday, is Veterans Day on the town ball. Be welcome and encourage everybody to be there. On November 18th, as I said, we have the joint meeting with the school committee to appoint the Northeast Metropolitan School Committee person. They have a presentation by Collins Center that night. And we'll do that at eight so that we can get the other two things completed before that. That same night, we have the Board of Assessors coming in for a presentation on the single split, our split tax rate. And at that time, I believe they're still, they are also going to give a little presentation on FY15 real estate assessments. The PACS committee, which we commended tonight, has a fundraiser on November 29th. It's a turkey trot fundraiser at Ingleside Park. It's a five K race. The route is to be determined Saturday, the 29th. And the further information is on the website. Is there any further under public relations?
Just a real quick fundraiser for the Sippel Winthrop is going to be held Friday, November 7th at the Curtis Park Yacht Club. Jackets are required, purchase your tickets at the Winthrop Chamber of Commerce and to benefit the Winthrop Chamber and also local businesses. Thirty-five dollars per ticket.
Any further public relations? If not, then a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Vice President Delvento, seconded by Counselor LaTieri. Motion for adjournment. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, unanimous. Thank you.